Good evening. Welcome to the May 20th, 2015 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. At this time, I'd like to remind you, if you haven't already, please take your cellphones and please turn them off or make sure they're on vibrate. Now, if you will please stand and repeat after me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Applications heard during tonight's meeting will be voted on by the Planning and Zoning Commission during the meeting tonight. The Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations on these applications will then be submitted to the St. Charles County Council for their final determination on the items. The individual items or bills will be introduced at the Monday, June 18th, 2015 County Council meeting. I see we have a quorum. Will someone move that we open the meeting?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The following documents are introduced as a matter of record for the public hearing and regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Unified Development Ordinance of St. Charles County, including zoning maps, and the year 2025 Master Plan for St. Charles County, which includes the year 2025 Future Land Use Plan map. Just for a roadmap for the evening, I will read each application into the record. We will then ask staff for their analysis and recommendation on that particular application. After that, if the applicant is here and they wish to do so, they may come forward, explain what the application is about, answer any questions that the commission may have for them. After that is done, we will then open up to the public. And anyone who wishes to speak on that particular item, please feel free to come forward and do so. As usual, there is a three-minute time limit for each individual, but also, too, if you do represent a group, homeowners association, group of petitioners, an organization, things like that, we give you five minutes as you represent a group of people. And anybody of those, any members of those organizations, though, may also come up and take three minutes themselves. After the public hearing is over, we'll bring it back, and the applicant may come forward and address some of the issues that were brought up during the public portion of it. After that portion, we'll bring it back before the commission. We will discuss it openly and then make our vote on the matter. And like I said, our recommendations are passed on to the county council, and they will begin deliberations on those items at the June 8th meeting. The first application this evening is application CUR15-000001, Conditional Use Permit. The applicant is John Nash, and the applicant owner is also John Nash. The application requests a conditional use permit for the storage of boats and trailers. The property is located at 1718 South River Road, is located on the southeast side of South River Road and the Katy Trail, approximately 280 feet south of old South River Road. The property is approximately 1.02 acres in size and is located within Council District 6. Steph?
Thank you. Area land uses and zoning include, to the north is zoned agricultural with floodway-fringe-overlay district, and there's a single-family residence on that property. To the south is zoned agricultural with floodway-fringe-overlay district, and that's the Louis H. Banger Wildlife area. That is the same to the east as well. To the west is zoned industrial in the city of St. Charles, and the uses are industrial. The 2025 Master Plan does show the property to be parked in open space, and the property is along the Katy Trail. It does not have direct access onto South River Road. The access is through a private easement. And we have the photo, this is the entrance. It's also the entrance to the Bangor Island Wildlife area. And then the easement of access, the truck is on the easement of access that travels to the property. The property is at that location. Okay. Steph, we originally wrote a recommendation for denial for the C2 zoning and the subsequent CUP. The property owner has sent us an email withdrawing the C2 zoning request, and is just requesting the conditional use permit for the boat and trailer storage on the property in the A agricultural district. Steph has no objections to that zoning. We do offer two conditions to the approval, that the parking surface and drive have a minimum of six inches of gravel, and no more than two boats and two trailers shall be parked on the site. And the only letter we had, of course, was the letter from the owner requesting the withdrawal of the C2. Any questions of staff?
Any questions for staff? All right, thank you. Is the applicant here? Want to come on up? Oh, and just a reminder, too, I forgot to mention, if you do speak, please fill out one of these speak cards we have up here at the front, just to make sure we get your name and everything correct for our records. Can you raise your right hand for us?
Yes, sir.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can you state your name and address for our record, please?
John Nash, 726 Jefferson Street, St. Charles, Missouri.
All right, go ahead.
I just, I owned that property since 1976, and I'd just like to keep my two boats and trailers down there. The only thing I'd really disagree, they said it was dangerous to drive across that trail. But I use that boat maybe once or twice a year, and one of those trailers I use for cutting grass down there and try to keep it upgraded, just to make it look nice. So I never had a problem crossing that, and when I bought to purchase the property, they said that's the easement, and there's, as you've seen on the video there, there was a couple, I guess those are county cars, that went across that trail. So the safety of going across that trail, I look both ways and stop for the people going by and everything, trying to be, you know, considerate. And I hardly ever go over it that much, just basically to update. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
All right. Any questions for the applicant?
How many times over a period of a year do you actually go across the Katy Trail?
So last year, I think maybe one time we'll take the boat out, and the other time is the storage of my riverboat, in case the water comes up. I use that every once in a while.
Just a couple of times?
Couple of times. And then the trailer I use for the update, haul my lawnmower down there to cut the grass and make it look nice. That's all.
Do you have any objections with the staff's recommendation with the gravel?
No, sir. They said six inches of gravel. I'm more than happy to do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Hammond?
Is there currently a house there or a structure on the property?
There was a structure on the property, but I had to tear it down, which I complied to, and that's the reason they said I couldn't get a permit earlier, because there was no, you know, there was a house, was not a house on that location.
Okay.
So, but the county told me to tear it down. I tore it down, and then they came back and said, "Well, you can't keep a boat and trailer down here, because you don't have a house on it." I was kind of up in the air. I didn't know actually what was going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We will now open this up to the public, so if there's anybody in the room that wishes to speak on this particular application, please feel free to come forward and do so. Seeing none, I will close the public portion of this and bring it back before the commission. Any comments, thoughts?
I would make a motion to approve with the recommended two conditions that staff has under the agricultural zoning.
Okay.
Also, I could...
All right. Mr. Leonard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Setely?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
And I, too, vote yes. The motion is approved 8 to 0. The next application is application CUP 15-000002. Hold my agenda, make sure I'm doing it right. No, I'm sorry. Next one on the agenda, I thought that was out of order, is a rezoning request, RZ15-000003 by Totem Bush Investments LLC. The application requests a zoning change from A agricultural district, district five-acre minimum lot size, to RR, single-family residential district, three-acre minimum lot size. The property is located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Highway DD and Totem Bush Road. The property is approximately 59.26 acres in size and is located within Council District 2. Steph?
Thank you. Okay. The area zonings around the property are called A agricultural district, and land uses, I'm sorry, the 2025 Master Plan indicates the property to remain agricultural. Land uses in the area include, to the north and west, single-family residences; to the south, single-family residents and vacant agricultural; and to the east is the Bush Wildlife area. I mean, reviewing the zoning change from A agricultural to the RR, which is our three-acre minimum lot size, we find that even though this isn't directly in compliance with the master plan, the master plan does call for three, five acres, and we do note that there are several three-acre tracts, you can see on the west side of Highway DD in the proximity of the site. So staff is recommending approval of the zoning change. They will have to provide a subdivision plot. They've shown us a preliminary design with subdivision plot that will have access to Totem Bush Road. So staff is recommending approval because of the other three-acre lots in the area. We did receive one written protest from Scott and Angela Thibodeau. Any questions of staff?
Any questions for staff? All right, thank you. Is the applicant here in the room? Come on up. Can you raise your right hand for us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
Yes.
Okay, can you state your name and address for our record, please?
James Meyer, 1274 Jungerman Road, St. Peters, Missouri.
Go ahead.
Basically, I just would like to answer any questions. The rezoning would go from five-acre to three-acre lots with the intention of building custom homes in the $500,000 to $1 million price range. There's public water there. There would not be any additional wells. There would be additional septic systems, as there aren't any sewers. And as Jan indicated, across Highway DD, all of those homes, for the most part, are on three-acre lots or smaller, and I think also, Jan, on Benny Road, those are three-acre lots also. That's all I have to say.
All right. Any questions for the applicant?
Are you going to have one builder, or are you just going to develop the property?
The intent is to allow the homeowners to choose their own builder. There will be covenants and restrictions. They haven't been finalized, but they're likely to be 3,000-square-foot minimum houses.
I know there's one objection before we hear it, but I think everybody here on the council has been past that property when they visited my home, which is like two minutes away from this property. My question also, what would be the problem if you just did five-acre lots, which is without any rezoning, which is allowed in agricultural? You're just talking the difference between 20 homes and 12 homes.
Well, actually, as Jan indicated, the preliminary plan that we have is only 15 houses, so the lots aren't actually going to be three acres, they're going to be closer to four acres on average. And basically, the reason for that, sir, is the configuration of the property isn't well-suited for that. You'll notice in the middle of that tract is already a three-acre lot that has been subdivided, and I understand that that is a legal subdivision?
The jury's still out on that, but they are going to be coming forward for rezoning on that property.
Okay. And that property is bank-owned, and we've been trying to work with them, and it's been very difficult. They have not been cooperative.
So the maximum you're looking at is 15 homes?
At the most.
I noticed since last summer, that whole front of the property, it's deteriorated, the cattle, the fences are down?
Yes, we're in the process of taking down the fences, and that will be entirely removed with a nice landscape berm along the length of Double D.
So the home's going to be along Highway Double D? Or is it going to be a buffer zone before that?
Yes. The preliminary plan calls for a parallel road, a single cul-de-sac, with the homes fronting the homes across the street, and then backing, there would be walkouts to the rear, just as they are, identical to the ones across the street.
Where would the ingress and egress be? Off Totem Bush Road? That sort of goes up in the gravel? You're going to...
No, Totem Bush is asphalt paved, public road.
Okay.
It's a county road, I think, isn't it?
The big white house that you see from the building, are both of those residents? Are people living in both of those houses now?
No, sir. The large white house, which is like 4,200 square feet, has been bank-owned since 2011, I want to say, and it's vacant. It's deteriorating in bad shape. The other structure is a large barn, and it would be removed.
So the bank holds the deed for that entire property right now?
No, sir. Just the three-acre lot. This property surrounds the three-acre lot.
But the bank has been, I was just concerned, the deterioration of the property along the front, who's, who had been controlling the maintenance of that?
You'll recall there was a fence there?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
That was put up by the owner of the house that lost it to foreclosure, and it was not put up with pressure treated wood, so that the posts were actually rotting and falling over. So over this past summer, we started to take down the fence boards and intend to remove all the posts.
Thank you.
I've got more of an observation. I used to field trial and ride horses at Bush Wildlife. They do allow hunting there, and many times come by in a horse, and they see the guys with their camouflage and different bow and arrows, crossbows, the antique weapons. And when we approved one, he's up the road, I asked him if they would put up a decent fence or a bunch of signs across the back.
Sure.
Because I can imagine what a bunch of kids, if they're going to go run and play, they're going to go run and play down there, but they definitely have shooting and deer hunting there.
Yes, that's true, and I would not be opposed to putting up signage. I believe that Totem Bush Road, which is a public road, there's actually a trail that goes into Bush Wildlife at that location, and it's not fenced, so currently it is open for public use. I believe that there also are signs along the property line that indicate that it's a wildlife area, but we wouldn't be opposed to putting up additional signage, absolutely.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. Okay. We'll now open this up to the public, so if there's anybody in the room that wishes to speak on this particular application, please feel free to come forward and do so. Can you raise your right hand for us?
Absolutely.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
It's Barb Williams, and I live at 1776 Highway DD, which is, I don't know my directions, top of the map. A couple properties over. My only real concern with the subdivision is how dangerous this road is. And Gary says he lives there, he knows how dangerous the road is, extra traffic on the road. I'm hoping, and I'm pretty sure the gentleman just said, there would not be an entrance right off of DD, because that's just asking for a lot of trouble. If he's putting an entrance and the exit on Totem Bush, much better plan. But that's my really only concern with this, is the extra traffic, and it's very dangerous. Okay? Thank you.
If there's anybody else that wishes, please feel free. Can you raise your right hand for us?
Yes.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Okay, can you state your name and address for our record, please?
My name is Laura Spray, and I own the property at 1732 Highway DD, which backs up, the back part of my pasture runs along, I think, the property that we're talking about, on Totem Bush Road. And I guess basically, my only concern is that, I believe originally, the property was zoned three acres in St. Charles County, and then, what, seven or eight, 10 years ago or something, it was changed over to five-acre lots. And I'm not exactly sure what the idea was behind that, but I would, I mean, I think in terms of, if you have horses, and it's a country setting, and it's a beautiful area, I hate to see cookie cutter houses smeared across what used to be farmland, and, you know, I believe St. Charles County was, is one of the few holds left where you can have, you know, where it looks still like farm country, and not subdivision after subdivision after subdivision in most cases. And I just would prefer, I know we're only talking about the difference between eight houses, but eight houses is a lot, you know, when you're talking about, again, traffic coming in and out, and just the look of the homes that would be placed on the area. So that's my concern.
All right, thank you. Again, if there's anybody else that wishes to speak on this, please feel free to come forward and do so. All right, we will close the public portion of this, and again, we always ask if the applicant wishes to come forward and address some of the issues, you may.
In response to the access directly onto Double D, that is not a plan. I agree that that wouldn't be wise. In response to the cookie cutter, let me back up. The prior concern was, I think, her pasture backs to a portion of this property. In fact, the configuration there, it would still be just two lots, whether they were five acres or three acres in size, that would side or back to her property. So that quantity of lots that she would abut would not change. Then finally, in terms of the cookie cutter nature, the whole concept behind this is custom homes, and the covenants and restrictions are such that, you know, they would prevent the cookie cutter nature and require a high percentage of masonry and stone and relatively high roof pitches and architectural shingle, and minimizing vinyl siding and so forth and so on. Thank you.
We'll now bring this back before the commission. Comments? Motion?
I think one of the, I would agree with some of the ladies with the traffic. We've had a lot, and I think all, most of you have driven down there, and actually, that traffic on Double D was very dangerous. There was just a little history, there was a lady that had her son killed, and she started SOS, save our shoulders. Really nothing, didn't gain any traction. I had Steve Elman as a captive audience, drove him down there one day and pretend you had a choking baby, and where would you pull over? And I think politically and from some of the people, the roads have improved there. We've turned down a so-called winery, which is going to turn to be a restaurant, heavy traffic. It is a very rural area, I agree with you. I don't think, to be honest with you, 15 homes, and if you're in a price point for half a million to a million dollars, you're not going to, it's not going to be detrimental to the area, it's actually going to enhance it. Certainly, it's going to be better than what the property is doing now. It's going downhill. It doesn't, it's very unsightly. And I think he addressed there was two lots. The only other concern, which I think Ron mentioned, kids are kids, and if you're in a neighborhood there where you have access to Bush's wildlife, 21 square miles to go get lost and get into trouble, having some type of signage for the safety of your little, the homes that go in there, to notify them that there are wild animals out there, coyotes, people hunters, both shotguns, bow and arrows, and kids can get into more trouble than they would on the little three-acre lots across the thing, so. But that being said, I would recommend approval for this.
Second.
Was that an actual motion? Yes, a motion.
And it was a second by Mr. Hammond. Mr. Hammond, how do you vote? Mr. Hammond, how do you vote? Mr. Setely?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion is approved 8 to 0. The next item on our agenda is application CUP 15-000002 by St. Charles Tower, Inc. Property owner is Scott Carey. The application requests a conditional use permit for a telecommunications tower 150 feet in height. The property is currently zoned C2, general commercial district, is located on the northeast corner of Highway N and Hepperman Road. The property is approximately 6.79 acres in size and is located within Council District 2. Steph?
All right, thank you. The subject site is zoned C2, as was said. Joining properties to the north, east, and south are all zoned agricultural, and to the west, the property is zoned C2, and also there's properties zoned agricultural. Area land uses include single-family residences in all directions. To the south is also a lawn care business with that, single-family residence. The subject property does have some history for us. In 20, well, in 2003, we approved a nursery on the property, and then in 2014, we approved the C2 zoning with the CUP for automobile, boat, truck, and RV storage. As far as we know, they are continuing ahead with that plan. Currently, the site is being used as a staging area for MODAT, as they do improvements to the shoulders on Highway N. This photo, the location of the tower, will be approximately behind a little bulldozer, can't get my mouse going, like in this area here. And then I also have another photo. This is the frontage of Hepperman Road, along the side where the tower would be located. Okay, so in reviewing the conditional use permits, of course, we, staff does their normal tests of health, safety, and welfare, and also with telecommunications towers, we also have to be mindful of the rules established by the federal government. So, but in looking at this site, we note that it is a site that's zoned C2. It will have a commercial use on the property, unlike the last tower application we had in this area. The tower will be over 250 feet from the closest residence, and it will be at least 150 feet from all the property. 150 feet from all the property boundaries. It's required to be that distance from the property boundaries. The, one thing I wanted to mention, in the C2 district, they are permitted to have a tower of 125 feet in height if they have at least two users on the tower. If they only have one user, then it's 100 feet. The tower that they're proposing in the site plan, it shows up to four users on the tower. That is probably not unusual because, just because of the nature of how everyone uses their phone on a regular basis. So Steph is recommending approval of the 150-foot tall telecommunications facility subject to the following conditions. The telecommunications tower shall not exceed 150 feet in height. Tower shall be painted a single color and that shall be indicated on the site plan. No lighting or outdoor signage except for warning signs and signs indicating owner contact information limited to two square feet each shall be authorized within the conditional use permit site area. A minimum six-foot-high chain link fence will be required around the facility. Vegetation to the west and north of the fenced compound shall not be disturbed except to accommodate the 20-foot access drive and site distance required at the entrance to Hepperman Road. I'm, and I'm sorry, let's strike the 20-foot access drive. We'll just leave it at the access drive, because that, that'll come up later. Six, a land disturbance permit shall be required when clearing and grading needed to locate the tower and related structures exceed 5,000 square feet. Number seven, only one access will be permitted to Hepperman Road. This access must be shared with any future development of the site. So that's why we're not limiting the access size at this time. The approved conditional use shall not commence on the site until such time as all improvements required by the approved site plan shall be built and approved. This conditional use permit shall be null and void if no improvements are required, no improvements required by this permit and authorized by a duly appointed approved site plan are installed or built at the subject property within two years of the effective date of the ordinance. One other thing I wanted to mention, the site plan, we, we've been working with them on the site plan and they have met the criteria in the telecommunications ordinance for a site plan. So that site plan will be approved that, as we have, as Steph has gotten it, the, the point where it's at right now. However, there are still some land disturbance permit things required because there's site distance troubles on Hepperman Road and they will have to answer, or mitigate the site distance problem on Hepperman Road. And so we will take care of all of that ahead of the building permit for the tower if this gets approved. And, oh, I'm sorry, two letters. We had a letter from, oh, sorry, a letter from Chuck McNabb and additional information that you, that was handed to you from him. And then a letter from the St. Charles County Emergency Communications folks. Yes, Gary?
We've had a lot of cell tower issues. I see in our packet, there's one with, called search structures. Is that provided by the applicant?
Yeah.
And what, what are those, three locations on there, three, eight, three and seven? What, what is that? There is any key or describing what that, that is?
The, the key was on the, the next page, but the...
The next page has eight items on it and I...
Yeah, the other ones are outside the range. Okay, the first, number three is, is one that someone has, is the one that, on Penny Royal that didn't get approved. When they make application for the towers, and they can correct me if I'm incorrect on this, but when they make applications for the towers, they're kind of reserving that site and they get it on, on, with the FCC. So, number three has never been approved by us.
That's, and the owner is AT&amp;T Mobility?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then number seven, that's an existing tower.
That's Union Electric?
Excuse me?
Here on your key?
Oh.
Number seven, that's Union Electric Company?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, number eight, I think that's the one at the Agape Church. And that's SBA Communications. So those are the, the closest towers.
And that was the purpose, to show you that there are other towers in the vicinity? Okay.
Yeah, and, and the ordinance allows with approval of the site plan, with the conditional use permit, for you to approve the site within a mile of, of any existing towers.
That's under number 17, Section 405.505?
Yes.
Okay.
That sounds about right. I don't have my books.
Bob knows that.
By heart, right? Between the two of you, maybe. Couple questions from me, Jan. So, the way I read, read this, first of all, so, based on the, the current zoning, they could have, 125-foot or shorter tower is, they could have, they, you can place 125-foot tower or shorter based on that zoning without having to go through a conditional use permit, correct?
Correct.
So we're, we're doing this just because we want 150, we're just a little higher than what's...
Well, and, and if, if there was, if there's a tower within a mile, they would still have to like go to, I think to the Board of Zoning Adjustment, then in that case. So what the 150 feet gets us according to their, their site plan is four users on the tower. If we do 125, they're only required to do two users. But I'm sure that they will address...
My next question is, so, and you've, you've noted that the, the closest residence is 250 feet away from the tower. How, where is the tower location, proposed location in, in relation to the proposed locations of the commercial activity for this property?
Okay, the, basically, the, the boat and RV storage was going to take this whole front area of the property. They have pretty much graded all of this for, as the staging area for MODAT. I think they were removing soil or fill material or something from the site. And MODAT's also storing materials on the site. So, so the tower will be located in, in the area where there were probably going to be some RVs parked, so they'll just lose RV storage in that area.
They don't have a specific place on that with a pointer?
Um, the...
Is the, is the, is the tower going to be in that square portion up at the, or where's the, where's the tower?
Yeah, in that wooded section.
It's gonna be, I want to say like about that area, let me...
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, sheet Z1 of your packet. Probably it'll be close to the S of subject property.
Subject property.
It came in that vicinity. Actually, it'd probably be, maybe a little south. There's a, from the distance on the photo, you can't see, there's a, a utility pole that they'll be near, the utility pole.
And it's, so, and according to, according to this, it's about 150 feet from, from the road?
Yeah, they're required to be 150 feet from, from all the property lines. And, and Hepperman Road, we've already received the right-of-way from, right-of-way dedication along Hepperman Road from, I think it was the nursery that dedicated the right-of-way when we approved their site plan.
Any other questions of staff? Thank you. Is the applicant in the room? Come on up. Can you raise your right hand for us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Okay. Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
Yes, it's Ally Raxdale, 211 North Broadway, St. Louis, Missouri. First, thank you for the opportunity to present this proposal to you. We are requesting a conditional use permit for 150-foot, monopole, clean telecommunications tower. The great news is that this is commercially zoned. And it's anticipated that the surrounding area will only become more commercial-driven as time goes on. So this tower will blend in nicely with the surrounding area. The even better news is that the tower is surrounded with mature, mature tree growth. Along Hepperman Road right there, you have a tall, mature tree line. And the closest residence is actually the 250 feet, the residence that is over 250 feet away is actually buffered by that tree line. This will also be available for up to four carriers and that is exactly why that we need the extra 25 feet. We've submitted all the materials as required by the ordinance and with that, we're requesting your approval of this conditional use permit. Happy to answer any questions.
Have you, have you signed your initial carrier yet, out of the four?
We do have an, an initial carrier lined up. Michelle, have we signed? Not yet, but everything is set up for it.
Well, I asked that because a lot, you know, everybody in St. Charles, when cell towers come up, it's nimbey, not in my backyard. And usually the applicant provides some detailed information of what the carrier is and what their needs are, rather than just put a tower up, is it really necessary or do they have coverage or is it overlapping existing coverage? That's why I asked if you have somebody sign and if you do, my next question is, how many other towers do they have and what kind of documented study have you done that it's necessary that they have another tower?
I can tell you that we have a nationwide carrier set up. And so, basically what happens, we are a cell tower company. We build the towers upon request. So this nationwide carrier came to us and gave us a search ring. And our job was to locate the best possible location within that search ring to meet the increasing demand. We, we've located what we found, what we have determined to be the best location to maximize coverage and to, to keep the amount of towers at a minimum, so to have other carriers join that tower as well.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I have a question.
Sure.
So, so if you have, if these national carriers, they don't build their own towers, somebody else builds them and they, they occupy them, is that typical across the country? Just out of curiosity?
I, I know that's typical with our company. They come to us so that we can find it for them.
Any other questions?
Chief of the Department.
All right. Thank you. We will now open this up to the, the public, so if there's anybody in the room that wishes to, to speak on this, please feel free to come forward and do so. Can you raise your right hand for us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Okay. Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
My name is Charles McNabb. I live at 1865 Penny Royal Lane, which is one street to the west of Hepperman and about a little bit further north than this tower would, is proposed to be located.
Go ahead.
Just a preliminary comment about what the previous testimony was. Sounds to me like there's no commitment for this. I mean, having it lined up is not a commitment. And it seems to me that it would be appropriate to consider this once a commitment is made to, so that you all can find out what's, who's actually using it and whether they do have other towers in the area. There are two towers just north of this location on the new road that goes south of 70, connects Hepperman to Z Highway. And one of those is not in use at all. And it's collected a whole pile of junk around the base of it that's pretty unsightly. And it is in an area where there is no housing, so it probably doesn't matter, people just go by it and look at it. But the one across the road from it is in active use and so it would seem to me that one of those towers would be perfectly suitable and wouldn't be necessary to build another one. But anyway, thanks very much for allowing me to speak before you gentlemen. I appeared before you once before when we had a application for an antenna on Penny Royal Lane. And I represent the St. Charles County Citizens Committee for the Protection of Individual Property Rights. And that's a registered committee with the state of Missouri. And we have members mostly in the area, but some who are scattered around St. Charles County. Most of the members of another committee that I represent, the Missouri Patriots, is all, they are also in favor of my position on this. I gave you gentlemen a handout, I hope you all have this. And mine is black and white and I handed somebody the one that was in color that was supposed to be mine. Anyway...
He's lucky one with the color copy.
Those mistakes are made. But I have a copy of it, so whoever has the colored one, good luck. I hope there aren't any extra sheets in it. We wrote a letter to you, which I'm sure your staff has, has enclosed. And the second page of this is the reasons, some of the reasons why we oppose this tower. And the, the third page is just a more or less housekeeping page. The fourth page is a statement that County Executive Steve Elman has made in the past suggesting that these towers around the county should be placed in parks. And I know people will say that the technicals don't match that, but nevertheless, that's his, his belief that, he mentioned it to me, that they should be put in parks and the rentals and so on should, should go to alleviate the taxpayers from having to pay the upkeep of some of these parks. And that would seem to me to be a very good idea. And it seems the same way to be, the same way with our group. There's a map in here that shows where the proposed location, the tower, is. And then these two towers up here, I haven't measured the distance on this one, but it, it looks like it's about a mile or so. And to the two other towers. And I believe there's a, a couple that has just remodeled a property that's right next to this. I don't know if they happen to be here right now, but it's a brand-new little remodel job and it's very nice. And along that line, many of us have put a lot of money into our properties and it would seem that something like this kind of commercial development would not be suitable to, to the area. The area is being upgraded. There are several very expensive new homes being built in the area. And I happen to have put more than a half a million dollars into my property to improve it since I bought it in 1989. So, everybody's improving their property and I just don't think that this kind of development is compatible with that, what, what the, at least the members of our committee think. And there are some pictures here of, of towers that have collapsed and I don't know how far that debris scatters. And this is a picture of the tower that exists to the south of that new road, about a mile away or so. And you can see how junky these eventually get underneath them and they aren't kept up. And here's another picture, tall picture of that tower. And there are a couple of articles in here from the Columbia, Missouri Tribune, which outline what is the current view of some of these cell towers. I think that's probably about all I have to... I think that's probably about all I have to say. Thanks very much, gentlemen, for listening to me.
Any questions?
Just a real quick one. How many?
Mr. McNabb?
How many people did you have sign your petition against this?
Well, I don't have a copy of the petition. But if I remember correctly, it's about 20.
20, thank you.
Thank you. Again, does anybody else please come forward? Everybody'll get a chance, don't worry. Can you raise your right hand for us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do, thank you.
Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
George Anne McNabb, 1865 Penny Royal Lane, Wentzville. I just have a question for the applicant. There was a statement made that there were plans for, sounded like fait accompli, for this area next to the proposed tower to be all commercial. I don't know of any such plans. I haven't heard of anything. It's quite a statement to make, and I'd like to ask for some verification of that. Thank you.
All right, again, helping up to the public, come on up. Can you raise your right hand for us?
Sure.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Okay, can you state your name and address for our record, please? Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
Dana Dorn, 1002 West Highway End. I live right on the corner there. I guess it'd be the southwest corner. And I didn't know it was going in. I heard about the camper place, but I never heard about this tower. I just, I just think it'd be wrong for the area. I know Mr. Griffin said it wasn't in his backyard, but, you know, it's pretty close to me. So I just don't think it'd be right for the area. I try to keep my place up and everything. I've lived there 25 years. I just don't think it'd be right for the area. There's a lot of traffic there on Highway End and Hepperman. Been a lot of accidents there on the corner. Because being as they redid the surface highway there, traffic's pretty fast going through there. And I don't think it'd be safe for cars, you know, even on Hepperman Road, you know? I'm sure they'd have to get out the Highway End. So I just don't think it'd be right for the area to decrease property value and everything. So that's about all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, if there's anybody in the room that wishes to speak on this application, please feel free to come forward and do so. All right. We will close that portion if the applicant wishes to come forward and address some of the issues. Can you raise your right hand for us?
I will.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Okay, can you state your name and address for our record, please?
Yes, Eric Martin, 211 North Broadway, St. Louis, Missouri. I work with Ally. Wanted to address a couple of points that were made. First of all, it is not uncommon for cell tower companies to build cell towers for national carriers. In fact, that is a, that is a very well-established business model. There are very large companies across the country, such as American Tower and Crown Castle, that do that sort of thing. We're a local company that does that here in the St. Louis area. And in terms of lining up the carrier, this tower will not be built without a carrier being lined up. These towers cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. They are not speculatively built. They are only built when you have commitment and lined up, a lined up carrier on that. The fact that a similar proposal in the area was considered a year ago shows that there's a need and a drive for national carriers to get coverage in this area. And this is a much more ideal location than the, than the one that was debated last year. Again, this is a commercial district. It's close to a tree line. It's on an existing commercial site. And the reference to the commercial area is to that. The fact that you've got right now, that's a mode-out staging area, but it's going to be an RV storage area, a commercial use that is well situated. And we can't lose sight of the fact, and respectfully, we do want to be good neighbors. And it's our intention, again, to do everything as we can in the design of the tower to make it as least visually disruptive as possible. That's why we're using the clean monopole design. That's why we're incorporating that tree line that's close there. But many of the arguments that were raised were really arguments against cell towers in general. And to be clear, again, this is a C2 commercial district. We're asking, this is 25 feet that we're asking for, you know, roughly the size of the podium there. Not whether there should be a cell tower or not. It's simply the fact that we must request this variance and the, excuse me, the conditional use permit. And one of the reasons for that will help minimize towers in this area. The fact that you can have four users on that tower, again, will attract them and use them. There simply aren't any viable alternatives that are, that exist within this search ring for the, for this location. And again, the fact that there are, you know, away from this, away from this, there are some residential areas, actually speaks to the need for it. Because both the need for coverage, covering an area, and also capacity is very keen these days, especially with the proliferation of iPads, smartphones, and so forth. People working from their homes, people relying on cell towers for 911 service. So it would be nice if we could put all the towers in a vacant area in the corner of a county. But they need to be where the people are. And they need to be where the people are in a responsible way. And putting this in a C2 area up against a mature tree line, we think accomplishes that. So those are some points that I wanted to raise. And again, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I have a question.
Where's your corporate headquarters?
Corporate headquarters is in Chesterfield, Missouri.
And you service these in just our general area here? You said the business plan.
Yes, the majority of St. Charles Tower, which is, which is my client, the majority of its towers are in the St. Louis metropolitan area. It does some work out of state. I know Arizona and some Texas work. But by far, the area that it serves the most with its towers is the St. Louis metropolitan area.
Thank you.
And one thing you addressed, the question I had was asking about the carriers. I understand your argument, but I could flip it the other way. And for the next planning and zoning, we could have 100 people like yourself coming in. We want this tower, we want this tower. And we've heard, you're not the first cell tower issue we've heard. And you get a proliferation of these. I mean, there's saturation limit, just like tattoo parlors may be available in agricultural. But if you have an application for 20,000 tattoo parlors in the agricultural district, there's going to be an uproar. And I think the people, I'm assuming you would agree, anybody that's living near one of these cell towers usually has some disagreement because it's an eyesore in some respect. They, every, you're not the first person, but every, whether, regardless whether it's zone C2, agriculture, whatever else. But the question I was asking about is if, we've had some other people where we've actually had the carrier, like US Cellular. And they provided some data with us, why is this needed? And they showed the whole St. Louis area from south to north over in Illinois. And this was a, you know, dropout area. And that was, I mean, this is probably going to pass, but my questioning for this is where do we stop the proliferation of these? And you can get so many, and I understand the iPads and the capacity and all that. But you get so many overlaps, it's, and you're trying to make a living because you're making money from, you know, representing the cell towers. I like Mr. Aylman's idea, putting it on county property. And we would pay less taxes out here, that would be very nice. But that's all.
Well, I would, I would mention that Ms. Whipple will assure us that there's no going to be an overly, overproliferation of these towers because there are safeguards built into the county ordinances.
I addressed that, and I asked if there was a database, like St. Peters. There's, we have municipalities out here, and they don't communicate. I went to Jan, I said, provide me, I want to know where all the cell towers in St. Look, St. Charles. She can't answer the question, nobody can.
But for example, as a part of this application, I mean, we did, we did provide the two-mile radius. And the one that shows up closest to the center of our search ring is the site that was not, that was not approved. So again, there, we're not, we don't have to go to board zoning adjustment to request a variance, which we would if there was something in that one-mile radius. So I understand.
I understand what you're saying.
But there are existing safeguards. And again, we are, you know, complying with the current state of Missouri law on the telecom issues with our, with our application.
Have you by chance seen any data from this proposed carrier? Have you seen any coverage data, you know, drop, you know, calls dropped data? You know, like I said, you've, like Mr. Griffin was saying, we've, you know, we've been around the block before on this. And a lot of times, they have a map. This is the area. Here's green, this is good coverage, yellow, red. You see the data, and this is where, this is, you know, this is why we need this tower is because these homes right here can't get service from this carrier. And, you know, we don't, and we haven't seen any of, we, you know, we don't see any of that data. And we have seen it before, before, you know, on applications. Have you seen any, has this carrier provided you with any data?
I'm sorry, I personally have not. We do have a radio frequency engineer on staff with St. Charles Tower who communicates with the tower company, excuse me, the carrier companies as to, as to their needs and reviews those propagation studies. But again, with this current application, we have provided those, those things that are required by the current state of Missouri law.
Do you take ownership? Did you own the tower after it's built, or you built it for someone else?
So St. Charles Tower owns the tower. And so it actually leases the ground and then owns the tower. And then leases to the carriers on there.
Okay. How many, how many carriers do you need to break even on one of those?
Boy, that's a question I couldn't, I couldn't tell you. It would depend on the tower and the lease rate and so forth. I don't have a hard and fast rule on that.
How many would this potentially hold?
Potentially hold up to four. Right, and when you kind of count the major telecommunications carriers out there, that's, that's, that's a very positive thing because this would be a magnet to those as well. Again, minimizing the need for additional, additional towers.
You trying to find a location that's more attractive than other locations? Or I don't, you know, is your, is your tower more attractive than the one that's up in Wentzville?
We attempt to find locations that meet the, the search criteria of the national telecom company. Because again, the customer base, who we are providing the coverage and capacity for, we try to find it so that we can, we can meet those very technical needs. And then the second part of that is we try to find an area like this one that is minimally visually disruptive, that may be in a commercial district. And again, can take advantage of some existing geography such as a tree line.
Mr. Hammond?
Typically, 150-foot tower, how large a coverage area does that provide?
Well, the, so each, there, you see the cell towers. On the monopole design, there would be three sets of antenna that go, that go around it. And it would depend on the, on the elevation of how far that goes out. I don't know, Michelle, if you know, hard and fast. We probably have to have our radio frequency engineer weigh in on how. Right, because you're also dealing with, you know, hills and that sort of thing. So it is very location-specific in terms of how far, of how far the coverage would come from an individual tower. But, but the way they're set up, you know, you have the pole, and you've got one antenna facing sort of on the side, and then a third of the way around, another antenna, and then the other antenna. And that provides, you know, sectors on each side. And like, if you're driving down the road, you're going to go from sector to sector to sector to tower. And it's important, again, to have a fair number of those so that, I don't know if you've ever been to Busch Stadium, and you take out the phone, and you try to upload something, and you get the little whirring symbol? You might have coverage, but you don't have capacity. And so the need for, you know, the towers and sometimes in closer proximity to each other is driven by that need for capacity.
I would like to let you know, I voted against the last tower. And I'm probably going to vote against this one. And when you come to the county council, I expect you to have people there that can ask technical questions because the last one couldn't do it, and I'm not getting the answers that I want tonight.
Well, I'm sorry that I'm not giving you the answers. We're, again, more than happy in our application process to provide whatever, you know, the county wants, as well as what, what again, would be required under the current state of Missouri telecom law. So it's certainly not our desire to.
I don't know how you can expect us to come up with a decision when you all can't answer simple questions that I have that are, you know, I don't consider myself an expert, but I at least like my answers, the questions I have answered. So if, just, when you come to the county council, would you please have somebody that can answer my questions? Thank you.
I got a question.
Go ahead.
You indicated a while ago that the tremendous cost of these towers, over 200, 300,000. Why aren't you looking at the tower that is abandoned in the area? Instead of just going out and building another one?
You mean the one that was not approved?
No, I'm talking about the one that was in our literature here that the gentleman said was abandoned.
Well, again, the search tower, the search ring, the structured search that we did and provided to the county, we've, you know, visually inspected all of those that are coming up on the FCC site. So those that are, or the FAA site. So those that are of public record and are out there, we've looked at.
I certainly also agree with Mr. Hammond down here is that you can't provide us with a signal strength off of this tower. I think it is pathetic that you're here in front of us, asking for an approval.
I respect your opinion.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
I have one, quick one. When you call this search ring, if I was putting myself in your shoes, you go around and obviously you have to stay a certain distance away from other towers. So if you map those out on a map, you find geographically where, where are places. And if it's sitting in a residence, you shift it around and you found a commercial out. So this looks like a nice piece of ground. Did you get in your research of St. Charles County, including St. Peters, Wentzville, all the subsidies? Do you have a map of all the cell towers west of the Mississippi in St. Charles County? Inclusive of St. Peters, O'Fallon, Wentzville, Lake St. Louis, Defiance, Augusta? Do you have that data?
Not with me, I don't. Again, we can run searches from the public websites, which would, which would come up with that information. But again, cell towers need to be located in close proximity to each other. You know, putting one in the corner of a county doesn't help the coverage needs when you need to serve, you know, a residential population. And again, we're talking about 25 feet, roughly the size of this podium.
Any other questions? All right, okay, thank you. We will now bring it back before the, before the commission.
Respectfully suggest that we've kind of had our discussion here. And I'm ready to vote.
All right, I will entertain a motion to, a motion to approve.
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second? Second.
Can I ask a question, or is it too late to do that?
Quick one, yeah.
I'd like to know exactly what we're voting for. Are we voting on an additional 25 feet? Are we voting on the entire cell tower?
This is a conditional use permit for a tower 150 feet in height that we are voting on.
Which is 25 feet higher than the normal that would be.
Which is 25 feet higher than what would be, than the height allowed under the current C2.
I thought it was 100 for one carrier, 125 for two.
It's 125, if 125 for two, but I'm just saying that the conditional use permit is what's needed to make it 150 feet, 125.
If it gets, if it gets voted down, that just means he can still, they can still build a 125-foot tower.
If it gets voted down, it goes before the county council. This particular one goes before the county council, where the county council can accept our recommendation or override us. So the county council will take up this particular bill, this particular one, at their, at their meeting in June. But if it is, if it is ended up voting down, the way I understand it is they could legitimately build a 125-foot tower on this property without becoming, without having to go through the conditional use permit process. There are other processes there, of course, you know, building permits and things like that, but.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there are other, but they just wouldn't be coming before us. Okay. So there was a motion to, a motion to approve. Mr. Ellis, how do you vote? I vote yes. Mr. Leonard?
No.
Mr. Coon?
No.
Mr. Hammond?
No.
Mr. Settleey?
No.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. McBride?
No.
Motion is declined six to two. Like I said, it will go before the county council in their June, in their June meeting. All right. The next, the next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the April 15th meeting. We all had a copy of those in our packets. Any questions, suggestions, changes needed to those minutes? I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I will make that motion.
So is there a second?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any other business before the, before the commission? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
All right. See you next month.[1776.63][1776.63][music]